All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm calling this meeting to order. It's six oh seven PM. We apologize for the somewhat tardy start. We are having an issue with our Zoom account, so it will take about thirty minutes for us to have the Zoom account up and running. So if you'd like to give public input during the first public input session, please do so either by contacting our office via email at boardofselectmen@dyton-ma.gov or calling us at seven seven four eight seven two zero nine two zero. At the end of the meeting, during the second public input session, I will allow public input for items discussed previously in the meeting as well, just in case anyone wasn't able to do so while the Zoom account was down. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. It will be replayed on Channel Nine on the regular schedule. And with that, I ask that everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
During the past week, one resident of Dayton that I'm aware of passed away. That was Nancy Koss, lives in the north end of town. And in her memory, I would ask a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. And our condolences to Mrs. Koss's friends and family, of course. I don't see any scheduled appointments this evening, which is nice. Did we receive any discretionary spending requests?
None.
That's also nice. Do we have any public input either via telephone or via email yet? And again, I will come back.
Not right now.
I will come back to it at the end. No worries.
I have some public input.
Sure.
I need a pen, so that's great. Oh, it's right here. Oh, my gosh. Okay, so. Mine is about green communities. So we're working our way through our designation funds and projects and wrapping everything up. We're working with Serpide on the energy efficiency report that we have to file. And so I notified DOER that I was moving on and that there would be other people that are taking the baton about it and what would be coming up in the next steps. And Lisa Sullivan, our regional coordinator, reminded us that we have about fourteen thousand dollars and some change left over in our designation award to be put towards a future project. So just to let you know, the other three projects, so four total, the energy, the electric vehicle charging stations, and then there was weatherization, Wi-Fi thermostats, and LED lighting. Those should all be complete. Weatherization's done. The other two should be completed by the end of this calendar year. So you would have about fourteen thousand and some change left over. Do something else relative to whatever you want to do from your energy plan.
Was that with potential re- all the rebates, I should say?
Yes, you'll probably actually have more left over because our weatherization project came in under what was originally requested. And I assume the LED lighting and the Wi-Fi thermostat will as well. When our energy plan was written, I believe the utility companies ended up putting together better rebate packages, and you're reaping the benefit of that because now they're more lucrative. The electric vehicle charging stations came in. We ended up spending five thousand and we anticipated spending twenty thousand. So we saved, that's the fifteen thousand. The estimated, so.
So do we have to spend it by a certain time?
No. Well, your contract for designation ends at the end of next September, September twenty twenty-one, but you're completing everything because all we said we were going to do were those four projects and we're completing them. So there's this leftover sum of money and you can go through your energy plan. I also believe you can have it be used towards an actual energy efficient project that's not listed in your plan, but you might as well just finish out the plan and receive the savings over time through your utility bills.
To Selectman Pacheco's point, would it be po- if we think, and again, we're going to have a transition period, so I don't think that right at the moment is the right time to like go out and apply for another round of grants. But when that time comes, to Selectman Pacheco's point, can we roll over or apply that fourteen thousand dollars to if we were to get a competitive grant?
I believe so.
For a specific project?
That's what I was just commenting on. I believe you can. And so really, DOER is pretty great. They just want you to communicate with them and they are very willing to answer any question that you have. So Lisa Sullivan is our regional coordinator. I shared her contact information with you and they will assist. They certainly held my hand enough through this whole project, so I'm sure they'll do the same to you.
Fabulous work. That is fabulous.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I've got two items under public input.
Absolutely.
These are really for future agenda.
Mm-hmm.
My understanding is that at the DS School Committee meeting last night, the school committee voted to change our assessment, raise it by two hundred and sixty thousand over and above what we voted at town meeting. So we're going to have to discuss that once we get the official notice. The town of Rehoboth, my understanding is, is having a town meeting, their annual town meeting would be the first of December. There is a warrant article on the Rehoboth Town Meeting Warrant to separate the school districts back to its original state, meaning pre-K to A controlled by local school committees and having a regional high school. So that's just something else we're going to be involved in. So I just pass that along for information.
Thank you.
Along that same mind, then, so if they vote for that, do we have to also vote the town of Dayton to separate? Or is it, if they vote to separate the?
I believe the agreement says it has, both towns have to vote, just the way we had to have unanimous vote. When I say unanimous, both communities had to agree to expand it. I believe it'll take two town meeting votes, one in each town, voting to break it up. Obviously, even if both towns do vote to do that, the Department of Ed is going to weigh heavily on this.
Yeah.
But it may be a solution to everything. And I just want to point out, as you know, the regional district, we vote a budget. But we also know within the budget, there are three breakdowns with pre-K to A and the high school. The reason why there is, there are three breakdowns in that budget is because back when we were going to bring them together, the residents of both Dayton and Rehoboth said, "We want separate budgets for our," back then it was K to As.
Yeah.
Because they wanted to have oversight and really understand what was being spent at the local level because they felt it gave them more control. And you weren't throwing all the money in one pot that actually could be used somewhere else. So in a way, this is not anything new, but it's something where we should certainly have on an agenda for discussion. And maybe when we have that quarterly meeting with Rehoboth, it's a good topic to bring up.
Mm-hmm. Did we ever hear back from them about that? I wanted to ask, actually. I know we got a letter from them thanking us for the nice letter that we sent them regarding their.
Senior sent that.
Yeah.
So we ended up sending that communication just after the fire. And so as you can, obviously, they're really focused on that. And Mrs. Aruda did respond back that they're still sort of getting their bearings, but it is something to follow up on.
We can wait till after the, um, their meeting. And our meeting is November sixteenth, so I think that that's fine.
The other thing is, I thought there was a study committee somewhere about the regional district. Was it at the school, school level?
No, it was, um, it was in Dayton. Yeah, and, and we have a resignation tonight. So I'm not sure they, I don't think they have anything.
There was also supposed to be a building, like a district one that the superintendent set up.
I'm thinking this warrant article may have been brought by petition.
It was, in Rehoboth it was.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's nothing, so just to be clear, there's nothing. We've received nothing from our town.
Okay.
It wasn't even a deregionalization. They were studying different options.
Yeah.
We've not received anything and I'm not, my understanding is they don't have anything to give us. So we may be having to make a decision, maybe in consultation with members of the school committee, administration and things like that. At a future, at a future.
Exactly, and that's why I mentioned as a future meeting. The other thing is, if in fact it passes in the town of Rehoboth, there would be a revised regional agreement. And whatever happens in Rehoboth, if it passes, then I think we have to discuss it. And obviously, if it does happen, I think the regional agreement is probably going to look like it did before all the grades came together, only with a few modernizations, let me say. So anyhow.
Well, some of the, um, just, just to comment because I was on the task force, still am on the task force with Mr. Swartz. Some of the language, like non-controversial language, just different legal language, needed to be updated anyway. And I'm not giving my, my position. I mean, we have no data. We have nothing. I'm just saying that in the worst case scenario, if we were, if some of, one of the outcomes was we updated the regional agreement, then it might be good because there were potential conflicts by not having updated legal language in the, the contract that they're, agreement rather, that they're going by now. So more to come on that.
Few to attend items, Mrs. Brady. Thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Pacheco, did you want to read the scheduled announcements, sir?
Sure. A Veterans Day ceremony will be held at Veterans Park 979 Somerset Avenue on Wednesday, November eleventh, twenty twenty, at ten AM. All are welcome to attend. Please wear a mask for the safety of all who may attend. In case of inclement weather, the ceremony will be held in the Dayton Lions Pavilion, eleven eleven Somerset Avenue. That's right behind this building here. The Dayton Cultural Council has set Monday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty, as the deadline for the organizations, schools, and individuals to apply for grants that support cultural activities in the community. Last year, the Dayton Cultural Council distributed about fifty-eight hundred dollars in grants. These grants support a variety of artistic projects and activities in Dayton, including exhibits, festivals, field trips, short-term artist residencies, or performances in schools, and workshops, and lectures. The town of Dayton's food bank distribution will be held next on November twenty-first, twenty twenty, located at the Town Hall, nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue, lower level, and it will be a drive-through. And we got additional announcement. The Dropbox at Dayton Town Hall will not be available from five PM on Saturday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty, Halloween night, through seven AM Sunday, November first, twenty twenty. We apologize in advance for any inconvenience, for any inconvenience. Thank you. Dayton Town Clerk's Office and Dayton Town Treasurer's Office. And that's it on the announcements.
Thank you, Selectman Pacheco. Madam Administrator, did you want to start your town administrator report?
Sure.
Thank you.
So I think, as everybody knows, we've been working diligently on the CARES Act reporting requirements and the due date is Friday. Due to our work schedule, we will be submitting by tomorrow. It has been a significant amount of work. We received requests this week from the Dayton-Rehoboth Regional School District and also Bristol Aggie. Bristol Aggie I got yesterday, so it's not on the agenda, but I'll speak about that in just one second. The requests from the school department are large, eighty-seven thousand dollars. We do have some remaining, remaining in our, we have funds to cover this remaining in our allotment through the CARES Act legislation. I don't believe the carport will qualify, however. I don't think that that's something that CARES nor FEMA will reimburse. And I just want to break this down so it's clear what the risk is we take when we go forward and take on another entity's information or request. So CARES Act is the twenty-five percent match, which when there's an, I know you all know this, but for the benefit of the public, when an emergency occurs and FEMA declares that they will reimburse communities for dealing with such an emergency like a hurricane or flooding or something like that, some major storm, they cover seventy-five percent of the cost and the town covers the twenty-five percent match. The CARES Act funding serves as the twenty-five percent match. However, the legislation was written rather hastily, as we can all imagine, and they don't quite match up with how FEMA's process is and what they provide reimbursement for. So we've all been told that up until June thirtieth, everything was pretty much, yeah, go ahead, whatever you needed to buy. But they were going to be much more picky and choosy, FEMA, in the, the second round. So what would be covered under CARES Act does not necessarily mean would be covered under FEMA. And why is that important? Because that's the seventy-five percent. That's the lion's share that a municipality would be putting out and not necessarily getting back. Does that make sense to everybody? So the district will be putting out that money and we would only be providing whatever CARES or FEMA gave to us. We become the grantor and the district becomes the grantee. So we're like a little in-between entity. So I just want you to keep that in the back of your minds when we go through this. So Mr. Kitchen, the business administrator did provide a narrative. He provided the quotes. We've sent that along to you. I think we've been rather supportive of our schools, so I don't take it lightly that I'm saying no about the carports, but I just, I don't see how that would fit into what we need to do. They're saying they need it for extra space for breaks, but they have the outdoor greenhouse, they have the modulars, they have a hybrid system. They have the large parking area. I don't know how we could really swing that. And so if you do approve that, that's fine, but the district should know that they might not receive the reimbursement on that. Just because we say yes doesn't mean CARES and FEMA are also going to say yes.
Who foots the other part of the bill?
In this case, it would be the district would foot the bill out of their operating budget. So right now, how we're handling.
That's worst case scenario.
Right, exactly. We're running a deficit in the anticipation of getting reimbursed and we're following very strict guidelines and we're really, we here in Dayton are very much monitoring what is the item. We have asked A and F a couple of times, Administration and Finance, does this qualify? And they've said yes and no, respectively, to various things. So we've done our due diligence to make sure that our items qualify. So I just wanted out there that just because the town, the three of you, might be generous enough to extend the CARES Act funding to the schools, does not mean the entire portion will be covered and they have to be aware of that.
My question before opening it up to my colleagues is how much, if, before we act on this request, how much is left in the fund of the six hundred plus thousand right now? I know, I know we don't have it in front of us, so just, uh.
Sure, so we were allotted six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars total. Our first reimbursement weighed in at a grand whopping seven thousand dollars and some change. The requests were about twenty thousand and then that twenty-five percent rang in. There are some varying degrees of percentage increases, so it's not exactly twenty-five percent. And then our next round has, I'm going to be conservative and say sixty. I think it's more, it's closer to fifty thousand. So we haven't really touched the surface, but we also have the seventy thousand Chromebook thing on there for the schools. So we're not, we're not close to our grand total of six ninety-five. We could accommodate for these requests.
Before opening it up, I just wanted to have that be the context because I also didn't have the figure in my head of what we were starting with. Whoever wants to start, if you have any questions or comments.
I'm sorry, before that, just one, I should have mentioned this before. The requests here from the district are not for the high school, so there's no percentage sharing. This is for Dayton Elementary and Dayton Middle School. And most of the focus is on the middle school, especially for the technology pieces. If you wanted to extend this for, Paul Kitchen told me, if you wanted to extend this for the elementary school for technology, it would be an additional about twenty-five thousand, if you wanted to, but they're not asking for that right now.
Can you explain what the, what?
It would just be some of the added items that they're using for remote learning, Chromebooks, some other types of materials and.
Is it a need though, did they say?
He didn't put it on this first list, so it's an extra. But if you wanted to, it's about twenty-five thousand.
Well, we'll wait, we'll wait until he sends us. Is that okay with everyone?
Well, we need to know because our deadline is the thirtieth and I told him this and with all due respect to the school, they knew about this all summer long and I'm just getting this now.
Okay, well, my whole thing is they're not actually asking for it.
Correct.
So that, I guess that's my position. Selectman Pacheco, did you have comments, questions about this?
The figure that you gave originally for the CARES Act was six ninety-five, six?
Our total allotment?
Yes.
Six hundred and ninety-five and some change. I don't know the last three numbers, but it's six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And that is our whole kit and caboodle.
And that's CARES, not FEMA?
Yes, right.
So these bills here, is it for CARES and FEMA?
So.
So these figures?
So this is the total cost of the items.
Yeah.
Twenty-five percent, at best case, is reimbursable by CARES. The rest is expected to be picked up by FEMA. However, it's very clear that these categories don't merge together very well and that there's a chance that FEMA will not reimburse. So the district needs to understand that if they, if we go forward with this, if it's not reimbursed, the town's not picking up the tab on that. We have our own deficits to deal with, in that case too, for our purchases. So they have to just know that.
Next question, whether we would, the town would be obligated to pay that if FEMA?
And just so that's clear, no. The town does not pick up the tab for them. They cover the rest of it.
So for example, the carport, if the CARES Act doesn't cover it and FEMA doesn't cover it, they're, that's their responsibility, right, the school?
Yes, but I'm under, they haven't ordered it, so they're, they're, right.
Um, did you say one other school asked for money?
Uh, yes, I can talk about that now if you'd like. Bristol Aggie.
How mu- what kind of money are we talking about?
For Bristol Aggie? They are at, I wrote this down, sorry. I have a lot of papers. Their total requests were around sixty-four thousand, but we can't do, we've already checked with A and F. One thing is for a tent and they asked for eight months of payments on the tent. But we cannot go past December thirtieth, so that's the other thing. Anything that you use CARES Act money for has to be in place, finished, complete by December thirtieth. So you can't just go out and get, you know, a new building and think that it's going to be all set. So they only cleared four months' worth of that, so that translates to about twelve thousand instead of the original twenty-five thousand that they were requesting. And the rest is thirty-eight, but that's lower because there's a tax. So it's thirty-six thousand, two hundred, plus sixty-three, eighty-nine, and then the twelve thousand.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Of course.
Aggie school request? So if I recall correctly, we did get a request regarding the high school at some point from the CARES Act and then some of that request went to Rehoboth as well. So is the sixty-four thousand that the Aggie school requesting, including the portions, excluding rather, excuse me, their request to the other? Because I know other municipalities send, send students to the Aggie school.
Right, so I had asked Derek Costa, the treasurer, I said, have you reached out to everybody else? And he told me that because the town had reached out and offered it, that they did not ask for any other committee, community to chip in, if you will. And then he also said, um, he, he believed it was unfair to do so as we will be placing a debt assessment for the new school building project onto the towns and cities the next fiscal year. So, I mean, is it nice for us to do this? Of course, and we are a good neighbor to Bristol Aggie and they're a good neighbor to us. But we're still going to have to pay that same debt assessment.
Well, Sharon?
Rehoboth, when, when we were talking about this back a few months ago, I had asked Rehoboth, I said, if Dayton is willing to help, and I said Dayton students at Ag or BP, would Rehoboth do the same with their CARES money? And the answer was yes. So maybe Mr. Costa needs to contact Rehoboth and take that list and say, you know, we submitted this to Dayton, but at least if Dayton and Rehoboth agreed to split it up. Because the answer was yes. They said they would do it if asked, so he may not be aware they said they would.
I, I wasn't aware, so I will certainly pass that along.
And I'm not, I, I, I just wanted to be clear. I'm gonna, if they're reasonable requests and they're needed, I'm going to support them.
Right.
I mean, I fully anticipate that, but I just was under the impression that they would, that each school that sent a request would follow that same splitting it up between the community.
Yeah, and, and I agree with you. I think I would have sent a notice saying that one member town had offered, did any other town wish to assist? But I just said.
I'm sure everyone will.
I can send an email to the superintendent and tell her that we had this brief discussion and that, I'll have to find the email, but Rehoboth said they would be willing to use some of their money for, because they send children to that school.
When you send that email, will you add that we did verify if CARES would cover this? And the answer was yes.
Okay.
It's covered, with the exception of the tent, it's only the four months because of the December thirtieth thing, but it would be covered. So there's some comfort knowing that you're getting the reimbursement back.
I agree with my colleagues. We've got the money and a school that our children attend needs some help. And it's covered so that we don't up, end up footing the bill for something that, that isn't a covered item, then I would support doing it, so.
I actually feel that way about the carport. It says here, and the way that it was, I did actually inquire about it. And the way that it was explained to me was that it was for quote-unquote "extra space, social distancing." I'm going to support it, knowing that if it's not covered, that if they really do end up wanting it, that they will have to then pay whatever that portion is, that percentage. I believe you said twenty-five percent?
CARES Act covers twenty-five percent of the item and then FEMA picks up the seventy-five percent. I will say that there's now a, like, it's like the second round, part two. And that's to say, hey, we went out and bought X, Y, and Z. This covers it because of X, Y, and Z. Like, the TV is actually a great example. We purchased this so that we could do Zoom and have healthy meetings and discords with public interaction because we couldn't fit them all in here because the government shut down our occupancy levels or lowered our occupancy levels. So we purchased this TV and we were able to have effective meetings and we had that speed zone meeting. At first glance, it's not a, it's not at a, um, a coverable expense, a reimbursable expense. But I think we have a pretty good argument to say that it is. So in round two B, we will have the opportunity to discuss with A and F. We need that reimbursement because here's why we did it. So there is that opportunity and we can, the carports can be part of that conversation. Bristol Aggie can be part of that conversation, things like that, so. We're trying to make it work. We're trying to be good to everybody.
I guess my only comment on the carport, and I, and I don't want to get sidetracked because we're talking about CARES and we're talking about what they need. But I do have a slight concern with this and my slight concern is here we are again discussing another temporary solution for apparently space needs or for social distancing. Obviously, this is more related to being impacted by the pandemic. I really hope that, and I know the pandemic kind of delays plans and I understand that. I think we all understand that. But I really hope that the school district is rocking and rolling on that school building study committee because it's been a while. It's been, Selectman Taylor was actually on the board back when we concluded our Dayton School Building Study Committee and then sent the request to the district. So it's been about two, three years and I'm really hoping that they're making good progress on that. So we don't have any more, we had the modular units and now we're here discussing carports. So I think we need to start addressing a more permanent solution. Madam Administrator, for the sake of emotion, if the board is going to approve this, do we need to mention the total or can we just say as presented this evening in this?
Sure, although I just noticed something as I was thumbing through here. So I'm wondering if you could do some sort of added something with review by the accountant and myself because there's something, I just, I just saw it. It just caught my attention and I want to just follow up on it that I don't know if it would be reimbursable because it's work, work for a dam- damage, but COVID didn't cause that damage. So I just want to investigate that further. So maybe like up to, up to an amount or?
Okay.
If we give tentative approval pending verification by the business.
There we go, verification, that's a good word.
All right, yes, by the town administrator and the town accountant. That would mean whatever you verified, we would, the vote would carry.
Right.
Okay? And that way we have some options.
Exactly.
Instead of saying X dollars and then finding out, whoops, that's not what we want to do.
Right.
That would, that would work.
It does work for me. And then in the, I just, I'm trying to just get all the information I have into your head so that in the next meeting, you'll be able to make any fixes you might need to. But that round two B, you can also say, we're going to withdraw this request because they're going to audit this. And if we have more money coming in than what we've actually granted out. And if we have more money coming in than what we've actually granted out to the district, that will be a problem for us. So we wanna just.
It sounds pretty good to me.
Well, we really just wanna cross our Ts and dot our Is. Um, so, and then the other item, I just wanna get this out there. We need a very important piece of paper from Bristol Aggie, if you are so inclined to have them participate in this, and the school district, Mr. Kitchen knows about it, I need a certification form, because that makes us the grantor to a separate entity, and so we need that signed. So hopefully, he's watching, and this is a nice reminder that I need this, uh, before moving forward.
Do we know if the Zoom account is working, cause I'm getting bombarded.
Oh, sorry, I was, uh, it's my fault, I was, it's my, um, I was talking, and I wasn't fourteen o'clock, I apologize.
No, it's okay, that's what I, that, that was my response.
So we're not forwarding on Bristol Aggie tonight, because we don't have enough.
No, no, that's November fourth, correct?
No, so. So Bristol Aggie would be on November fourth.
So they don't have that.
But if you are in general agreement, I will direct the town accountant to, here we go, I'm in, guys. I will, uh, direct the town accountant to, um, put it on the list. And if your vote is negative, we'll sort it out in round two B, but if it's positive, it will be there, and we'll work with Mr. Costa to get that appropriate form, and, um, also tell him that the other communities may be able to pitch in, too.
Help, yeah.
Do we have any other?
I'm starting now, it's, it's live.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Do we have any other questions regarding, um, CARES, uh, the requests, rather?
Adam.
No? Okay, I will entertain motions, um, regarding the requests from the Dayton-Rehoboth Regional School District regarding the CARES expenditures.
Okay, just gotta write a couple of words.
Sure.
I got most of it.
No words.
Okay, we're up and running.
Um, actually, but while you're writing those words, can we just see if anybody wanted to participate in this particular discussion? Can they hear me?
Um, they should, cause the microphone is right there next to you, um, on the table.
Can someone on the Zoom call unmute if you can hear me and say yes? Is the volume up on the TV?
It is, or no?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay.
Can, can you hear me, people on Zoom, residents?
Maybe, is, can anyone hear us? I mean, we're picking up yellow, so I know the, oh, scared me.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, they can weigh in, if I make the motion in ten seconds, they can weigh in on discussion.
Mm-hmm.
If we can reach there, if they can hear us.
I think that should be working. Okay, you can, I will entertain motions, cause I will wait for discussion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we tentatively approve the list of items requested by the regional school district for the Dayton Elementary and Middle School for CARES funding, pending verification by the town administrator and town accountant, that these are, uh, acceptable expenditures under that funding. Does that work?
Quotifying expenses.
It works, yes, thank you, and they can hear us.
Oh, perfect.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Before we act on this, I just wanted, if you have, and again, this, we started a little bit late. This is regarding the Dayton-Rehoboth Regional School District CARES expenditure request. If you have a comment regarding this agenda item, please feel free to unmute yourself, state your name and address, and let us, uh, know how you feel.
Hello?
Hi, can you hear us? Yep, I can hear you. There we go, I'm just gonna use this mic. Go ahead.
Hello?
Hi, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Hi, Leah Quinn, seven five eight, Council Road, way, Dayton. Um, I just, I, I kind of heard the motion. I just wanted to ask, do we have, um, an explanation of what this CARES Act money is actually going to be utilized for at the campuses? I don't know if I caught that.
Sure, so, um, we had a, a snafu a little bit with our Zoom account, and we had this conversation before we were able to go live on, uh, Zoom, so if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll quickly surmise the conversation. So, uh, the town of Dayton was given the CARES Act money, and we have to have grant, we're the grantor to the schools. We have two schools asking right now. One is the Dayton-Rehoboth Regional School District, the other is Bristol Aggie. The regional school district is looking for some technol- oh, and just to be clear, it is not for the high school. All the purchases will be for the Dayton Elementary and the Dayton Middle School. Uh, it's a lot of electro, um, excuse me, electronics, some technology, some sanitizing, um, items. And then what we were last talking about were some carports at the Dayton Elementary School for, um, space requirements. And a, and an important caveat to this discussion is that if the, the item is not reimbursed by FEMA, which is the big question all of us are facing, all of the municipalities are facing right now, then the district would be on the hook essentially for covering that expense. So, uh, if you have any questions about that, because it's a, a little bit of a sticky, sticking point.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer?
Before you go to the next person, I want Andrew to get the sound.
Andrew is also, we're gonna have a real tech person fix something. Here, let me move.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, I ran, I ran a little.
Yeah, okay. Now I gotta put my mask on. I hear. Okay. Um, Mrs. Quinn, did you have a comment about the, the motion, which was to approve the request?
No, I just caught it on the end. It was very hard to hear, even with Mallory just speaking now. It, it was very even hard. It sounded like she was so far away.
It's because it, it's cause the audio was coming through the laptop, but we changed it. Can you hear better now?
Yeah, it's, it's much, much better now. Uh, no, I have no concern at all with the motion to approve it. I hope it does get approved. I know that these are trying times for all of our educators at the middle school, as well as the entire district, and at the elementary school, so I hope that, um, this money is going to be utilized for, of course, some capacity issues that we have at the elementary school, middle school, to make this horrible time with hybrid and all of these space concerns, um, a better solution for our heads and educators.
Can I ask you a separate question? Cause we had another discussion before about, um, Rehoboth, um, is having their town meeting on December first. They have a petition article to deregionalize, um, their K through A. You're on the, you're on the regionalization study committee in town. Are you going to have some sort of statistics, report, recommendation, or something for Dayton? For, in case we have to make a decision?
So we, yeah, sorry to cut you off. Um, yeah, so I and, uh, one of the other members present, discuss, discuss me, have been talking, obviously, I know it's only a jump up tonight, that, um, Chris Andre has resigned from that committee. Uh, we are working, right now, ironing out a date to meet. And, and yet, we do have several reports, statistics, we work with some other school districts, um, as well, who have gone through deregionalization and all of that. So we do, uh, most definitely have some, some paperwork to go through, and, and the committee is, is more than willing to, to get back to work, uh, obviously, because of this new item. That's, we hope it is time to, I guess, vote on our petition. So, yeah, we will be more than willing to, uh, I, I guess, work together, and give the board selection our recommendations.
Thank you, Mrs. Quinn.
How many members on this?
Thank you, guys.
Leah, how many members are on this committee?
Can you hear him, Le-, um, Mrs. Quinn?
I couldn't hear him, I'm sorry.
Yes, I was asking, how many members are on that committee now?
Um, I don't want to go on record. I, I'm confused a little bit, only because I think that one member has moved. I know that Chris Andre is resigning, and I do think there is one more member, so there would be three right now.
Okay.
Uh, but I don't want to speak on behalf of somebody else at this time. We are, like I said, in the process right now of getting a meeting scheduled, so.
Thank you.
Not to belabor the point, final question, but you do, right now, regardless of whether one member moved out and the other resigned, you would still have a quorum right now, right?
I believe we have three, if not four members still, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brady, can we add that regionalization study committee to our list of vacancies, please? And we'll get the, um, make sure the website's updated. Okay, um, does anybody else have any public input regarding the CARES Act expenditure request from the Dayton-Rehoboth Regional School District? Please unmute yourself, name and address.
Nobody's unmuting.
Okay. Colleagues, either of you have any comments, questions?
Nope.
All right?
No, so.
Hearing no further, uh, input, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. Madam Administrator, you have the floor.
The next item is just a FYI for you, that we have received, um, quite a lengthy public records request. There is a combination of four years of open session requ- um, meeting minutes, and four years of executive session meeting minutes. So the, the open meeting minutes are no problem, we're all ca- caught up to date on that. Um, we've been doing some work for executive session minutes, and then in my next item, there is a request to actually release some of these. That is something we need to do anyway, but also just to prepare for this request as well. Um, we received the request on Wednesday of last week. Um, we've responded that we're working on it, and I believe what we, sorry? We have not responded, I'm sorry. Uh, so tomorrow, we will respond that here are the open session that you've requested, here are these, uh, executive session that you've requested, and then give a date for the, the remaining requests. But I wanted this to be on your radar, um, and Mrs. Brady is handling it very well, even though it is a laborious task, and she does not need more laborious tasks.
So, can I ask you a couple of questions about this?
Yeah, always.
Um, I guess my first question is, uh, Mrs. Brady and I have been really good, ever since the website was revamped years ago, about archiving at least all of the open session meetings. And I looked back on our website, and these minutes go back to two thousand nine. So why are we, why do we have to print these things out for someone when they're online and readily available for literally anyone can go get them right now?
So it's a request for electronic anyway for him, so we're not printing.
Okay, okay.
However, in, in the event that somebody came in, that is a extra bonus for transparency that you do. Everybody should be putting their min- everybody, meaning all communities, should be putting their minutes online for public inspection. And generally, it pairs down your public records requests, because they are readily available. However, if somebody submits a records request, you do have to respond with everything that they've asked for, unless the record does not exist, and then you say the record does not exist. Um, and so regardless, you do have to just give them the documents. But, I mean, you can always say, as a matter of practice, we place our minutes within two weeks on our website, or however, you know, you wanna phrase it. Um, you can say that, but you do have to respond with whatever it is that they're asking for. Generally, the public records law was recently changed. Generally, um, it would be provided electronically, unless it can't be, like, maybe it's too old, or we don't have a scanning machine capable of putting it for. So, uh, they're trying to pare down on the cost to municipalities.
That was my concern.
And then municipalities previously were charging six cents for black and white copies, or one cent and two, six cents for color, something like that, and people were complaining that it was a barrier for open meetings and inspection, inspection of public records, so they changed the law. But you can charge for something that's over and above and really exorbitant, but it's the burden of the town to prove why that is, you know, over and above and exorbitant. Um, maybe it's on microfiche and you have to translate, I don't know, but, um, there are very few ways in which you can charge somebody these days for public records.
Thank you.
Sorry, I know that's probably more comprehensive than.
No, no, I've actually felt like you answered my other question, so I appreciate that. Any further questions about this notice of public records request?
Nope.
All right, Madam Administrator?
Uh, and, uh, I'm sorry, I forgot I was still on.
No, it's okay.
The last item is we're requesting that you release these executive session minutes. Um, I know that Selectman Goulart had, um, some concerns over a couple of them, so we are now asking that you set aside August twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, and January twenty-second, twenty twenty, and do not release those. Um, and then March eighth, twenty twenty, that's actually a typo, it should be March eighth, twenty eighteen. But those were the items that were sent to you. So, um, we are requesting release of the executive session minutes for January third, two thousand eighteen, January tenth, two thousand eighteen, January twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, January eighth, twenty twenty, and March eighth, twenty eighteen.
Before I entertain motions about this, are we releasing these minutes in response to a specific public records request? Or is this just business?
Both, it's both. So this has been on our radar to do and formulate a process for quite some time. Um, honestly, Karen and I talked, excuse me, Mrs. Brady and I talked about it before COVID. Um, we have a whole policy and, or, excuse me, we have a whole process set up for this with spreadsheets and keeping track with which has been, which sets of minutes have been released and which haven't. Um, even though you release executive session minutes, they are still subject to redaction based on privacy laws and certain things that are still going on. Um, and so some of these will have redactions if somebody from the public looks at them.
And these specific ones do?
Correct, yes. Um, some of them don't, because the reason for executive session has expired, and you don't need to keep them private anymore. Um, it all depends on whatever you're going into executive session for. But we were trying to catch up, if you remember, on open session minutes, I don't know, maybe February or January, somewhere around then, and the next step would be executive session. You did do a huge crop, um, that took a while throughout the spring, cause you were handling other matters, obviously. Uh, so my request to you or, uh, recommendation to you is just to continue that process of catching up and getting them all released. Um, you know, you can pick a year, maybe the first year that the most senior member of this board has been, and then go forward in releasing them. Um, the chairman is supposed to, whoever serves as chairman, is supposed to do it from time to time. That's the language, from time to time.
We will do it from time to time?
Quarterly, match it up with the, with the, um, reports that you give on your, um, five-year plan.
That's actually a really good idea. Can we make note of that, Mrs. Brady? Thank you.
Uh, my audio was muffled to the point of being useless. I apologize. Um, I was just talking about a process for executive session minutes release.
Yes, um, I'm sorry, the, I think the public can hear me, though. Uh, we're just discussing, um, as always, our town administrator is giving us recommendations on, uh, setting up a routine process, such as maybe quarterly, for releasing various sets of executive session minutes, um, from our Board of Selectmen executive session meetings. Um, and with that, I will entertain motions regarding the release of executive session minutes for the following dates, January third, twenty eighteen, January tenth, twenty eighteen, January twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen, January eighth, twenty twenty, and March eighth, twenty twenty.
Solved.
Am I able to second this, even though I wasn't part of the board for most of these meetings?
Sure, you've already, the board has already taken action on approving them, um, and accepting them for review. You're just voting to release them at this point.
Thank you, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, the reason why I mentioned, uh, there were two that I didn't think we should release is because they contain, um, action that the board took, and the issues that I cited have not been fully resolved. And so I actually, uh, taped, stapled a note to each one, so those can come up in the future. And when they come up in the future, it's a note that says, basically, has this all been resolved, and it's okay to release it, all right?
Mm-hmm. Any further discussion?
Just that we're getting a lot of comments about our lack of audio, so we all, uh, other than Selectman Zagrafa. So it's this thing here, so we just have to project. You're, you're basically gonna be yelling into poor Andrew's ears.
This is for cable, this is for Zoom.
And that's for Zoom.
So are we able to get microphones for each person?
We don't know, we'll look into that, right? We'll look, we, we'll just try to find another set of that.
If we, before we take this vote, I know everyone can hear me, we're gonna do a test for the people on Zoom, okay? people on Zoom, okay? Selectman Pacheco, say a sentence, a duck, I don't know, swam in the water. I just wanna know if they can hear you, like who can't they hear?
I would like to wish everybody a happy Halloween.
I love it, that's better.
A little bit here.
It's a lo-
Jen is saying it's a little bit better.
A little bit better.
Selectman Goulart?
Uh, happy Halloween, everyone.
Yeah, so Brett is the clearest and I would say Selectman Goulart and Selectman Pacheco are a little bit muffled and Mallory and Sager are the most muffled, are you the furthest away from it?
Yes.
I am, but I will shout from now on. I will shout, is that good?
We will, we will look into getting to, getting more of these. I think they're probably like, what, uh, they're probably a hundred dollars?
They weren't that outrageous, I wanna say seventy, but-
So the only thing I think we could run to is if we don't have enough USB ports, are we gonna have to run into like a-
Yeah, a little, um, you know, that has the little-
Junction box.
Yeah, exactly.
Junction box.
With extra-
So I got one, one extra USB here.
So, um, in case anyone can't hear, we're going to get additional microphones like the one you're hearing me on for everyone else. So basically you'll be able to hear our next town administrator. Great, I apologize that you are unable to hear Mallory.
They're all here.
Oh, okay, good, someone can hear you, perfect. Okay, so, Selectman Pacheco, yes?
While we're on this conversation about our Zoom meetings, who will be running them in, in the future, will it?
I'm okay to do them.
Okay.
I'm okay, I, I will do the Zoom part because I'm, literally, you're welcome, I'm sitting right here, I can see everything, it's just like doing it at home when, you know?
Thank you.
When you give me the co-hosting privileges. Um, so I'm fine to do that, no worries. Any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it and that motion passes. Madam Administrator, did you have anything else?
That concludes my final administrator's report.
Yes, that's sad.
Don't make us cry.
But we appreciate it, I know, yes, please, me, yes, no, moving right along. Just kidding. We appreciate it and it will, it's definitely the end of an era and we appreciate all you've done.
Big deal, thank you so much.
Thank you. Slow clap. Okay, um, so colleagues, um, regarding old business, A, vote to adopt the OPEB trust, my understanding is some more review is needed on that. Um, I am requesting if it's okay with everyone that we move this to November fourth, I think we have a meeting next week, right?
Yes.
Do you-
And I just have one thing to say.
Sure, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So I heard this is actually for Selectman Goulart's benefit, so, uh, we did send those, obviously you know this, we sent those comments over to town council and he was starting to respond point by point, but spoke with Mary and they're gonna organize a meeting with, uh, the original author of the agreement and you'll be apprised of that meeting and can air your concerns and talk about it.
I did see her briefly, um, Mary, yesterday, and due to the amount of revision, I'll call it, um, she said that, that there's no rush, that we really need to spend some time and I don't think it's gonna be ready for November the fourth, but I would say if we made the motion to move it to a future meeting, as soon as we can have that meeting and whoever Mary is going to have actually draft an agreement that can come back to us and town council, then we'll know for sure when we can act now. But she said that there isn't a rush to do it, it's not a deadline, but she, she said she agreed it needed more work, so.
Are you okay with that, Selectman Pacheco?
Yes, I am, I was also gonna question whether or not it would be ready by November fourth.
Sure.
So, I think-
I, I would be surprised if we're gonna get a meeting up and running, uh, with, uh, whoever the advisor is, I don't know if it's an attorney or, or, is, is it an attorney?
I believe so, yeah.
So, um, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, um, schedule discussion of the OPEB trust at, for a future meeting.
Sure.
I'll just leave it that way.
Yeah, I was just gonna say under advisement, I'm sorry.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it and that motion passes. Uh, we also, uh, are waiting on a, um, review from town council, which I think we're scheduled to have everything in set for November fourth, for next Wednesday?
Correct, uh, although we placed this-
Regarding the Blue Wave, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Blue Wave agreement, uh, we, that is correct and we placed this here because Selectman Goulart did do as she said she would do last week, she put together, um, an amount, I guess, to start with, um, for that, but you can continue that and talk about it on the fourth.
Sounds good.
I keep trailing off, I'm sorry.
Did you give that information to, um, town council or to, um, Madam Administrator?
I'm thinking, um, I made photocopies, I think the last thing I sent out was that schedule, the payments.
This thing, yeah, I wrote on mine.
I only asked because I know he got some of it, but I didn't, I didn't know if he got the stuff from last week.
I believe he got, Karen, excuse me, Mrs. Brady, okay.
We're all doing it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, uh, move the discussion for the, uh, actually, we, we gotta stop calling it that because they corrected me.
Mm-hmm.
The BWC Green Brook pilot agreement to the November fourth meeting.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Under discussion, I just wanted to say both to my colleagues and to, um, the public that, um, this doesn't impede our process, um, we are gonna vote on different recommendations tonight for our warrant articles, um, the articles that you'll act on at the special town meeting on November sixteenth. But this doesn't impede the process at all because, um, we're not mailing anything, so we can make our recommendation for this specific article on the fourth. Um, and all that a resident will see and Mrs. Brady and I sat down and she generously explained this to me, they will just get a handout of what finance committee recommendations are in ours, so we could, so the fourth is not putting us back at all. Our residents will still have our recommendations and we can still act on this one on the fourth, okay?
Yeah, and I think it's important that, um, I know there are two warrant articles because these are separate, these are recognized by, um, Stormwater Committee and the Building Commissioner as two separate agreements because there are two different property owners involved. So, we have two articles, the total dollars will be the same, uh, what the tax, uh, schedule would amount to. So, there will actually be, when we get them, there will actually be two, uh, agreements that equal the total.
Thank you, Selectman Goulart.
So when we actually vote on this pilot agreement, will someone from Blue Wave be represented so that we can know whether or not they're agreeing?
It'll have to, after, after we get this back from our council, it's gotta go to them because if they decide we don't like that clause or we don't like that payment schedule, we've gotta talk to them, all right? So, if all of those negotiations, if they happen, are not ready, we may not take action at the town meeting. But I gotta tell you, I've got another one here that's almost ready to go.
Mm-hmm.
It's one of the ones that was tabled years ago, not the one we got, not the court case, but the one up on Richmond Hill. And, um, that one is in good shape, uh, Mrs., uh, Boragad gave me a, a payment schedule that is, uh, more appropriate for the town of Dayton, let me put it that way. And, um, because of the nature of this one, I had to have the Building Commissioner look at it, um, because of, uh, we, we're calling it Phase One Elm Street, it's DG Dayton now, um, but because there's another one right behind it, but I think we've ironed out the kinks, it's gotta be drafted and go back to DG and see if they agree. So, if by chance we cannot vote on, um, these two, we're gonna need a special town meeting because obviously they want this one to go in.
I was gonna ask that question, whether or not we're gonna wait through June or-
Oh, no.
Late May or should we have a special town meeting?
Because this, wrong one, this agreement, um, is actually more money in total than those two together. Those two together are about five hundred and one thousand dollars. I think Mrs., uh, Boragad, when we went over this thing, it's well over seven hundred thousand dollars and it's a fifteen-year agreement, which means the annual payments are higher and the first tax year they're going to pay is FY twenty-one. So, even if, when the third quarter bill comes out for all of us, even if the third quarter bill is not ready for them, they're going to pay everything for FY twenty-one in FY twenty-one. So, uh, this will be a substantial amount of money coming in almost immediately, so, um, so we would have to have a special for this one.
So do we have a motion on that?
They have all, I don't, I'm not sure if they have a motion, I know we're getting our track.
I can't remember, I'm sorry.
Well, this is not, this one is not on yet, so, kind of off.
Yeah, I was like, yeah, no, we should-
This one's up and running.
Yeah, no, I'm from, I'm from, I've worked up there, so.
Okay, oh, okay, yeah, and, um, I'm not sure, um, this one has a capacity of four point four seven five megawatts. Uh, that's what it's producing, it was scaled down a little bit by about six hundred panels, but, uh, yeah, this one, the money will come this year.
So do we have a motion on the Blue Wave solo pilot agreement?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we-
I'm sorry, what is it called, Selectman Goulart, Green Brook?
Oh, no, I made the motion, we just, we were having discussion.
Did you second it? I literally couldn't remember, my apologies.
Yeah, the, the motion was to move it to the November fourth meeting.
Perfect, okay, any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. Under new business, we have, uh, to vote on recommendations for warrant articles. Um, I know in meetings past, so I just to gauge how we wanna do it this time around, we've pretty much just, each selectman has raised objections to certain articles and then I believe we just recommended them as a block and taken the ones that people had objections to out and done those separately. Um, that being said, I actually don't have any objections to any of these articles, so, um, Selectman Pacheco, Selectman Goulart, um, you have the floor.
Article thirteen, I have a concern about article thirteen. This is for the, uh, North Dayton Playground Project.
Yep.
Uh, and this is for, uh, we wanna make sure that it's ADA compliant.
Mm-hmm.
The, uh, Commission on Disability, uh, got the report as to what would be purchased with this money the day of our first meeting and I believe our ADA coordinator, I should have asked to participate in this, uh, asked for some more additional information, it would, we received pictures of, uh, the items that were gonna be, uh, purchased. We've invited the Parks and Recreation Committee to our meeting tomorrow, uh, to discuss, uh, what they're actually thinking of doing and there is some concerns, uh, by at least one of our members as to, uh, the quality and why are we going with this particular vendor. Correct me if I'm wrong if I'm saying something wrong. Uh, so I'm not prepared to vote on this article until the Commission on Disability, uh, gets some answers from the Park and Recreation Commission.
My, I guess actually maybe my one concern on this article, and I don't know, I don't know, I'm not privy to those meetings, so I don't, I can't share that concern simply because I'm not on that commission and not, I've never, not seen the plan yet. Um, my concern was more, I heard that there might be a, an issue with storage of the equipment, like we don't have a place to store it?
So, right, well, I, that was one of my concerns, but they've answered that to me. Um, it comes in crates, it would be protected, however, since then, um, life moves pretty fast in Dayton, since then, I believe they're gonna just table this, um, because the Parks and Rec, oh, I'm sorry, he's not the chairman anymore, Mr. Ryan's of the Parks and Rec Commission, sat down with a member of the ADA Commission, not the ADA Coordinator, um, but after that, I believe they're going to table the motion.
Oh, well that answers it.
So, um, they'll come back in the annual meeting, I'm assuming, uh, once all the details are ironed out.
Is this the thing where there's no motion? Oh, okay, all right, are you okay with that, Selectman Pacheco?
Yes, so, but are we gonna have recommendations? I mean, we're gonna let the public know what our recommendations are, so if I'm not supporting this-
Well, if they're not, if they're not gonna recommend, if Parks and Rec isn't recommending it, then I'm not.
You can recommend to defer to voters, you can recommend to defer to annual, you can make, you don't have to just say, yes, I recommend it or no, I don't, you can put it in, you know?
I would recommend that we, well, now, you, what you're saying is, Selectman Pacheco, that this pla- this plan is maybe not something that the ADA Commission would recommend or maybe you don't have tha- have that answer yet, so we would, we don't even know if this w- would be ready for an annual town meeting.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're gonna be s- specific as to when we wanna continue it, because if we do have a special town, a meeting under pilot agreements, we may have an answer for this by then, so, I don't wanna limit it just to the annual town meeting, but I, I am, at this point, I am-
Can we just vote to defer?
Excuse me?
Just vote to defer in general, maybe?
Well, when we-
I'm not sure how we would work.
When we get to this article, we can say, we do not recommend it at this time. If it's not even a motion made at the town meeting, it's over, but at least the people will see, if there's no motion, obviously there's no vote, but they'll also see that the Board of Selectmen said at, when we reviewed it, we didn't recommend it at that time. That doesn't mean we wanna kill the whole thing, it just means not for this meeting.
I'm just concerned, oh, I, I get what you're saying and I, I really don't have an issue with it, my only concern is that if we actually say we don't recommend it and then can't explain because there's no motion and that's all people see on a paper, we don't get to say to people, um, well, we don't support it because we have some concerns that were raised by the ADA Commission regarding ADA compliance, and then what if a new plan happens? And that's all they'll remember is that, like, because we didn't get to explain.
We can also say move to table, there's no discussion. If it's seconded and they call the vote, that's it. Tabling it just means, basically, it's not being voted on.
I would feel more comfortable with that, I guess, if what I'm saying.
Well, the other, based on what I'm hearing, um, the motion would probably come from somebody on the Playground Commission.
Correct.
If they don't make the motion, there's nothing at all. If somebody makes a motion and discussing starts, we can always make a motion to table.
Mm-hmm.
And if it's seconded and they call the vote, it'll end right there.
Yeah, my concern is just having it say on the piece of pa- the warrant that people pick up at the town meeting that we didn't recommend it at this time.
Well, probably ahead of time, we'll, we'll know if they're gonna table it too.
We, yeah, no, the Commission on Disability should know tomorrow what their position is because they're gonna meet with us. And I'm not speaking for the Commission, we have different, you know, different mem- members, they may have different opinions on it, uh, but I, at this point, I don't have enough information to recommend it, so that's-
Can we at least hold this off until next week, till after you meet?
Well, when, yes, I, I don't mind doing that, but when does, does it get printed?
Literally the night of.
The night of, right.
Or the day of, excuse me, or the day before.
Our recommendations and all that kinda stuff.
Like November fifteenth, we need to know.
Okay, so they, we'll have an answer on November fourth, so if we wanna discuss this article further, but other than that-
And what we're discussing is just that label that's gonna, if Parks and Rec doesn't do a motion, Parks and Rec doesn't do a motion, I'm not gonna do a motion.
Mr. Swartz has commentary, but I don't know, I can't tell if it's about, oh, it is about the warrant, but I don't know if it's about this article.
Is it about the park, the playground, Mr. Swartz?
Yeah.
Okay, you have the floor.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I was unclear on this.
And I, I, I just, because that, this is a warrant that along the items that are on here are things that we talked about and I just wanna make sure we're prepared for our spring five meeting tomorrow night.
Yep.
Uh, this article was not one that we even discussed with the, um, in the spring, so if someone tomorrow, if someone from Parks and Rec, they give us an overview, because I, I thought we didn't discuss something that was gonna go through, um-
CPC, CPC, yeah.
We got to that playground, so I think this one's catching the finance committee off guard, so I just wanna, that's why I joined tonight, because I wanna make sure that we can have the answers tomorrow night, don't have to come back with some of the things that, that are jumping through the warrant, so if you guys vote through the warrant, I'd like to have, if we have anything, be able to just mention it, so we can be prepared tomorrow night.
So you want someone from Parks and Rec?
Yeah, I, I'd like to know why I changed from CPC to, uh, show the board will like to know, why I changed from CPC to, um, uh, being requested out of free cash or-
It's hard to hear, do you mind?
I'll come up.
I'm sorry.
I know why, uh-
Give us a second, Ms., um, Mr. Swartz.
The reason is they're trying to work with a private vendor, and again, if you didn't hear me before, um, and they had a conversation about it, I believe they're gonna table it, but this came about because they're trying to work with a private vendor for a matching grant that would, uh, cut a, a large portion of the, um, costs down and the due date for that was, uh, the end of this month, October. So they're, um, you know, while we would still qualify for that grant, um, I think they're scrapping the idea to work with the ADA Commission and put out a product that can be enjoyed by all, um, and, you know, it's been a long week for that North Dayton Playground, so it would be really nice, send off. I, I think, uh, Mr. Ryan's has worked very hard and very, very hard to want it to be an accessible playground, so if he's willing to work- So if he's willing to work with the ADA Commission, um, to make it so.
Yeah.
They did review plans and stuff, had some preliminary comments, um, so they're just still working that out. But that's why it wasn't going through CPC, and he had to make a decision to get in on the warrant before it closed, he put it in. Here we are. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
I'll reiterate tomorrow as well, and I don't want to speak for him, I'm sure he will also.
Are we gonna contact him, ask him?
I will.
So we're not gonna con- Mr. Rosa, we're not contacting him?
Well, he's the chairperson.
I'm gonna contact the Parks and Rec Commission.
Okay.
He has, Mr. Ryan's was given, like, delegated the authority to work on this project with me, yeah, at the.
Okay, I didn't know that, okay. Perfect.
So that's why, um, he and I have worked.
Perfect.
Yeah, I, I think I would also like to hear from Mr. Rosa also.
Of course, yeah, absolutely. Um, I did just want to say, um, I'm glad to hear that, um, the two, um, boards, uh, commis- commissions, rather, are gonna work together on this. Um, it seems like it was a timing issue where the ADA Commission just got formed, Parks and Rec was already probably, you know, halfway completed with their plan, um, but it is nice to hear that they're gonna work together. And I have found, and I think you as well, um, that when the two boards or stakeholders work together, that it's more likely to be successful, um, in the end, so that's good news. Fabulous. Any other articles, colleagues? Um, I know, Selectman Pacheco, we had discussed Article eleven. Um, I know it says thirty thousand six hundred, but we should expect to get that five thousand dollar, um, from the EVIP program.
Yes, I've, I've changed my opinion on it based on the grant that we.
Good.
We got.
So we could just get a little grant for everything.
The total cost for the car, I know, that's great.
I know, it's, it's not the whole thing, I get it, but this is a grant that.
Well, I, I just remembered Chief McGee and I had had a discussion about their inspection vehicle, and in the back of my mind, I just thought, I didn't know at the time the article was written if it, if that grant was even in someone's mind, so that's why I raised it at the meeting. And sure enough, it took, you applied, and then it was like, less than twenty-four hours.
Took a day.
We got a po- a positive decision, yeah.
So, for transparency reasons, the to- the total cost of the car is thirty thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. Shave off five thousand of that, so it's about twenty-five and some change. So, the finance committee has some wiggle room, I'm sure you'll appreciate that. Mr. Schwartz. I don't know if he heard me, probably not. And Mr. Schwartz says that at least you guys are my laughing audience.
Yes.
Um, he also has a comment on Articles seven and eight.
Sure. I did just want to, before we go there, I did want to make a comment on, oh, no, seven. We can go there.
Well, I do have a question though.
That was my comment, sure.
Have we been told how much free cash we have yet? Has that been determined by DOR?
It has not.
So, if we don't have that by November sixteenth, we can, how can we spend?
We sh- we should have it, uh, I spoke to Mr. Laviolette, and please.
I think he.
Correct me if I'm wrong. He's not on here.
I thought I saw him, but maybe not.
No, I don't think so. Um, he told me that he had submitted the, um, all the information and paperwork documentation one or two weeks ago, and that the turnaround time is about a week and a half. And I've spoke to other people, because I had the same concerns you do. Um, I also spoke to the chairman of the Finance Committee who's on here, and I'm gonna give you the floor in a second, Mr. Chairman. Um, he's, he reassured me, and also, um, they're having their meeting tomorrow night, which we will probably all be present for it as a posted meeting. Um, so if they feel comfortable going on the estimates that are in our packet, um, with the funding sources as, um, shown on that sheet of paper, I also feel comfortable. We should definitely have it by the sixteenth. Again, hopefully by the beginning of next week is what was told to me.
Well, the other thing is.
And the warrant has to be out by the second.
Since we're going to have a special town meeting, another one sometime because of a pilot agreement, if in fact the numbers don't come back the way we planned, based on our expenditures, we can still vote to reverse votes that were taken and, and defer items to annual town meeting if we have to. But I, I think we're gonna be okay.
I do too. Mr. Schwartz?
I see, I see, he's shaking his head.
Yeah, so just a couple, uh.
Is that a meeting, is that a waiting room?
Some of the articles, but Nancy just, I know we can talk about, we're gonna have that special at some point, but this'll just delay the setting of the tax rate if we have to push it off. So, but to that point, I, I also received, um, estimated free cash, and we will utilize that as a guide tomorrow night, and, and I'm gonna talk to he and Mr. Ryan's me tomorrow morning, just to get some further updates that we're gonna need for tomorrow night as it comes to the levy limit. So we make sure that our, um, our, our Google Sheets are all updated to that, so we know what, what we have in, uh, in the levy limit before we get that. So, um, let's hope we get that, that quickly. I know, uh, the water district, it only took us about two weeks, and that was a month ago. There's a water issue, not yet for this mission, so, uh, I would hope it came out, and, um, I believe that someone's made a couple of calls to DOR to check on that, on, on our behalf.
Squeaky wheel against the grease.
I'm a professional nag, and I'm very good at it.
Persistent.
Yeah.
Just to check on that, on our behalf, so, um, I, I would just ask on Article seven and eight if we could have, uh, if we could request that Mr. Ferry join us tomorrow night to, to the camp?
He's away.
He's in Maine.
He's away.
Oh.
Can Mr. Aguirre join?
Mr. Aguirre.
Have some questions on it, hopefully those in attendance could, could answer the question.
Um, I think.
This has been an ongoing project.
I think Mr. Aguirre might, we'll ask Mr. Aguirre if he can join the building commissioner, Mr. Schwartz.
Yes, he's been working with Mr. Ferry.
Yeah, he's, he's been working hand in glove with, um, Superintendent Ferry on those two things.
Okay, uh, 'cause I'm sure there'll be some questions on that, because these are not things that, that we discussed as extended features for the ball in the spring. Normally we're talking about the same things we talked about in the spring, so. I appreciate that, thank you.
So just so you know, Mr. Schwartz, Article seven, I, let me, I'm for engineering. Yeah, Article eight, we'll, we'll have that discussion. Article seven is something that's been ongoing. We may not have had that conversation, but we've, we've known about, and they made that plan with the engineering study for, because of the traffic issues there. So, um, yeah, we can definitely ask the building commissioner if he can join tomorrow. I know he's been pivotal.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're fully aware of the project, just weren't aware that it was gonna come out in the fall.
I was also surprised, but pleasantly surprised, but I do, I do understand your, uh, surprise as well.
Okay.
It's the first article in the file.
Yeah. Thank you. I, I will also add just on Articles seven and, well, seven. Um, I was also surprised to see it, Mr. Schwartz. I was happy to see it though, because as you know, we don't have full capacity in the schools right now. So I'm thinking if, if we can get it passed and get some work done while the schools aren't at a hundred percent capacity, it might be easier, uh, for them to make progress. So, um, happy to have that discussion with you tomorrow night, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Did you have anything else? Any specific articles?
No, no, that was it.
Okay. Uh, colleagues, did you have any, um, specific articles?
Article eighteen, I do not support Article eighteen. I think it's a dangerous precedent.
Mm-hmm.
I think money that is.
Can you say, just state what it is, and not everyone's like looking at it, I'm sorry.
Oh. Okay, Article eighteen, sorry.
Like, I knew what you meant, but.
Article eighteen is to, uh, in effect, set up a special revolving account into which money collected for police services, um, whether it's, uh, fines or fees or licensing or whatever, go into a special account ta- capped at a hundred thousand dollars to be used for, uh, acquisition of cruisers, repairs, so forth and so on. Um, I really think that the appropriate way to handle it is what we've been doing.
Mm-hmm.
I think a hundred thousand dollars sitting in an account like that, uh, is not necessary. Uh, maintenance and things like that are done.
Point of clarification, do you mind, you said what we've been doing for the public, that every special town meeting, we approve a cruiser?
Exactly.
And we agreed with the, so just so you, just so people know, she's not saying we're not gonna support the cruiser. She's against the fund, knowing that we have the agreement with the Finance Committee that every special town meeting, if we can afford it, we support a, a cruiser.
And, and also, we have in-house maintenance, and what in-house maintenance cannot repair or replace is under warranty, and the cruisers would go to an appropriate dealership. Um, I think the town of Dayton has been generous to its police department, and I really think any funds that they bring in through permits, fees, licenses, whatever, should continue to go into estimated receipts and close out to free cash.
Do you have a recommendation on this, Madam Administrator? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, I didn't receive anything, and I, I feel like you probably would have something on this.
Uh, I actually do recommend this, because this is, the funds for this would be coming from, if there's an entity performing work in our town, and they need a cruiser to be there on the, uh, scene, so maybe National Grid's doing some work on a power line, the cruiser's there to show everybody, hey, we have workers on the side of the road. The fees for the cruiser, the use of the cruiser, would go into this fund. I think that it actually is a savings, because it's diverting the detail money into something that would perpetuate a, a cruiser, um, certainly not every year, but maybe, I don't know, I have no idea how lucrative this would be. Um, I think it takes the onus off raising and appropriating it every year. So for, I've been kind of open about this. I don't like going to the tax base all the time. I like to find other ways to finance things, um, so I'm actually in favor of it. I understand what Selectman Goulart's saying. It would be a loss of revenue to the town's general fund. Um, but I actually think you would replace the annual purchase of a cruiser through raisin appropriate. But, that being said, taking that off the annual raisin appropriate radar is also a risky maneuver, because it's been there and it's established, and everyone's used to it. If all of a sudden you have to go back to the people and say, hey, we don't have enough in this fund that we set up that was supposed to pay for this, you know, you have to go back into raising and appropriating when the committee may not have been anticipating that. And this is years down the line when you would be used to having this separate account. So, there's pros and cons, but I am in favor of it.
If I may, years ago, we did not put cruises out at details. Uh, the employee who was on that detail had their own vehicle, and some of them had requested that they be allowed to put blue lights on their, uh, personal vehicles as a safety thing. When we looked into it, we, the Board of Selectmen at the time, looked into it and realized that other communities were putting out some of their older cute cruisers, so the flashing lights could be there. We started doing it because, quite frankly, we charged by the hour for that cruiser that would be sitting in the parking lot, not being used, and it was a be- much better option safety-wise so that employees, we didn't want employees putting blue lights on their vehicles, number one.
Right.
And the other thing was, this, quite frankly, is a moneymaker for the town. And so, uh, the Board at the time voted to use those older cruisers for that purpose. So, um, that's how that all came about.
So, who would decide what, what they're gonna do with this money?
The chief of police.
The police chief, but you're setting, the town is setting it up. I'm sorry that I'm yelling at you, you know it's because I'm projecting.
She's trying to lay.
It's not the first time.
The laptop, the laptop deficiency, she's trying to.
Yeah, it's the last time, no, no.
You'll miss this.
I will, I will.
I will.
So, um, the town sets this up with certain parameters. The hundred thousand dollars is an upper limit cap. So, once the cruiser, the, this fee, this fund starts making a hundred and one cent over it, it goes to the general fund. Um, you can lessen that cap. There's still time to do that. Um, I just think a hundred thousand makes sense, and average cruiser's about seventy to seventy-four, once it's fully outfitted with all of the stuff we put in it, and then maintenance for the fleet. So that's where we came up with that. Um, and then you're saying that it's only to be used for police department fleet or, you know, the maintenance of such, the related accessories of such. You can put restrictions on it if you'd like, just like any other revolving fund, uh, but it would be under the control of the police department. Excuse me, the police chief.
I agree with, uh, what Mrs. Goulart has said about this. I'm not gonna support this.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I was, when I saw this, um, I also thought about, we do have revolving accounts.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we also have, um, we have two in the library, we have one for the, um, under the Council of Aging, I think it's the primetime program. So those are three we vote on every year. Um, and I believe they are all capped. We also have accounts that are, I'll call them strictly controlled. Planning board, uh, fees and things like that. And, and then a big account that's really strictly controlled is the ambulance fund. And the, uh, I don't have a problem with any of those. Uh, I think the, especially the ambulance account, because, uh, it's paying a salary, or salaries. It's, uh, direct, directly funded through insurance or other types of reimbursements. And by law, it's restricted. The town can't get that and use it as estimated receipts and spend it on something not related. The income that comes in from other departments like this is a big part of free cash. And, and we have been generous as best we can with the police department, and, and that's the reason I'm saying, uh, I would rather keep it, uh, as it is, so.
All right. I'm gonna support it, um, but I, I totally get wh- where you're coming from, so, um, it makes a lot of logical sense. But I, I understood what you were saying as well. You just have to make a decision. I totally understand both sides.
We're like the yes versus no in that red book on the questions.
Well, too bad you're not a voting member. We could've tied this thing.
Uh, Mr. Schwartz is raising, um, his hand to speak.
Sure, sure, Mr. Schwartz, sir.
Well, I would just ask the Board of Selectmen to hold off on that until you get more information to know how much money it actually is.
Okay.
I think that's the question we've asked around meeting tomorrow night, is what does that all reflect? And if it's really on a yearly basis, it's similar to what being, uh, a cruiser would be, or something. It, it, I don't know why we wouldn't want to do it, take it out of that, it could be a special article every year, if there is the ability to do it. So, at least get the figures before we, we shut the door and don't make a big conversation against it.
Thank.
If we have some figures of what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Um, part of the reason, and I'm not saying thank you, because it sounds like we might be somewhat in agreement. I'm saying, uh, thank you, because you jarred my real reason why I'm gonna support this. Um, my concern is what ha- what if something happens, and I don't know. We usually approve one vehicle. I think, uh, last year we might've done two, which was sort of rare. But usually, we approve one new cruiser every year at a special town meeting. My concern is what if we need to do, what if there need to be two or three in one year? We, if there was enough money in the fund, you could just, the police chief, I guess, it says he can authorize the spending for those cruisers. We wouldn't have to wait for a special town meeting, and certainly, we would, we would be able to do more than one, um, at a time, so. I, I understand the concerns for sure.
I agree. You know, I am more with the advocate out of the Finance Committee that says stop taking money away from the general revenue side, but I think you gotta look at it on a page-by-page basis, and, and I understand, uh, Mrs. Goulart's comment.
Mm-hmm.
She's sat next to me on that committee for a long time, and, but, on this one, I just wanna see, because, let, let you know, ten years ago, the town was never paying for a, you know, we were always getting it from the money we got from, uh, either the power plant.
The power plant.
Or, uh, um, that, it, it is a, it is one of those unique situations where you have to continually revolve that fleet, and if there is a way for us to manage the funds better, I think we should look at that alternative. I'm not saying either way, if I support this or not, but I just wanna see what it reflects in an actual dollar amount, because it could be that we stopped this ago, and it builds a little bit, it could be, yeah, that on the top side, we don't have the ability to, like, to set aside money for it.
Accumulated, yeah.
So, I, I just want to make sure we have all of the actual figures before we, um, put it together altogether.
So do we want to wait on, I'm sorry, let me take your.
So, I think that the taxpayers ought to have a say on whether or not we're gonna purchase another cruiser, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Since I've been on the board, and I'm sure it goes way before I was on the board, we always support the police department.
Yep.
If they need ano- another cruiser, that's fine, we're gonna make the recommendation, but I think the taxpayers should have the final say on that.
Mm-hmm.
And this is, we're taking this away from them. And, and generally, they have supported the police department also. I just think that, uh, it's their money, and they ought to have a, a say in it. I understand it's for fees and stuff like that, but that's still, it would be free cash, which is their money, so.
I get it. I actually, and, and I actually agree, they should get a say. The way I see it is, I mean, I drive through town, I see all the back of the blue signs. I, I genuinely feel like if they come to the town meeting and they vote yes, then they have said that they're okay with having a fund and not having to, um, so I'm okay with them, you know, voting on this, and we'll see how it, how it shakes out.
You know, another concern is FY twenty-two. We're all sweating FY twenty-two.
Mm-hmm, in twenty-one.
So that's something else. Well, we think, we think, fingers crossed, we're gonna be pretty good in twenty-one, but the big concern also is what happens in twenty-two, especially if people don't get back to work and restaurants don't open, and the state income is not even. Especially if people don't get back to work and restaurants don't open and the state income is not even at this year's level. Uh, so, um, that may be a reason to either defer it to a, a future thing or whatever. I have a question on three.
Can I make a comment on that?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 it's okay, cuz, cuz I feel like it could slice either way to your point, Selectman Gulart, you're absolutely right, it could be the way that she's describing it. But could, it could also be that we create this fund and it's our saving grace, cuz twenty-two is really hard. And thank God, there's monies, I, I guess I'm earring more towards like what, uh, Mr. Swartz is saying, it could be either way. It could either be really good or just not enough money accumulates in it and it doesn't really help.
Not, not if the town needs a hundred thousand dollars and you lock it up in one department. I remember one year when it was extremely, it was terrible, I can't remember, it was the year the, they cut our rate. But anyhow, there was an, uh, the chief wanted an article on the annual for a cruiser, just one.
Mm-hmm.
And we said to him, we're not gonna put it on, we'll do it in the fall. Well, the fall came and he says, is my cruiser gonna be there? And the answer was, no, there's not enough money. And then what happened was, there was money at the regional school that had been set aside. And Rehoboth had received their refund of that money in July. It got to be December when Dayton found out the money was sitting there. And Dayton said, we want our money. And the Regional District School Committee had to vote on it sometime after the first of the calendar year. And the amount of money I asked for was eighty thousand dollars. The vote was, uh, all in favor except one person to give it to us. We got seventy-nine thousand sixty-three dollars and we had a special. The chief got his cruiser and Mr. Ferry finally got to fill a long-term vacancy on the highway department for the rest of that fiscal year. So that was a particular year that we really struggled, but we kept promising the chief and we were able to do it. But that was a unique situation, but again, that shows how I think the people support the, uh, police department. And certainly the boards have over the years, so just, just a thought.
Thank you, Selectman Gulart.
I got a question on three.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just the wording, to reduce the tax rate.
Mm-hmm.
Um, making this payment, there's no guarantee this is gonna reduce the tax rate, and I don't know why that's in there.
So, we have generally been do- this would be the third time, time doing this?
Yeah, we always do it, yep.
So, the last time we did it, there were questions raised by D O R, so we passed this language through them and they approved of this.
Okay.
But the reason being is what we do is before we set the tax rate at tax classification time, we chop this out of the budget real quick, so it doesn't hit.
Right.
The two and a half percent increase.
It's not a raise and appropriate.
Right, and so because we do it that way, D O R requested this language.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So it is a little wonky, but yes.
Yeah, well, when I saw it, I thought, the tax rate could go up a couple of pennies and everyone's gonna say it went up.
Right, right.
But no, uh, that was my only question.
But it's just to take this payment, specifically this amount of money, out of the operating budget previously authorized.
Um, I do have a question for my colleagues, um, it's, I'm not raising this because I have an issue. Um, I actually believe that this should be in an appointed position. Um, did we have any, are, are we comfortable as a board recommending Article seventeen?
Seventeen?
The treasurer collector becoming an appointed. And, um, the town administrator did graciously provide us some information from some, uh, nearby, uh, communities.
Oh yeah, I saw the chat.
Um, thoughts?
Yeah, my, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a problem with it as long as it doesn't happen until the current treasurer collector's term expires, obviously.
Does that language need to be in the article? How does it become effective?
There's gotta be an effective date. No, you can just appoint her.
Okay, uh, when, when she retires and, okay.
You just appoint her as, with whatever.
Yeah, and we can say effective when, whatever election, April of whenever.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think she's got like two years or something, twenty, whatever.
Twenty-two, I think it's twenty-twenty-two.
The other thing that I would look to see is, so, so, uh, having it appointed, uh, those two positions, appointed. Um, I don't have a problem with, except, I wanna see a job description that really requires financial background. This isn't something somebody can just apply for.
You would, you would be the appointer.
We would do it just like the town accountant job description.
The appointing body, so you would.
We would, absolutely, yes.
You develop it, um.
And I think there are, just, just to, I've spoken to the treasurer collector and I think there are actual requirements, like she, she, um. Mrs. Hathaway was telling me there's courses you have to go to.
Oh, yes.
So there are like, like aside from, you're just saying, let's raise the bar, I actually agree with you, but that's why we would want it to be an appointed position, but. Madam Administrator?
We just need to rewrite this, um, because in Dayton, the treasurer and the collector are two separate positions, so we would need to combine them. Um, well, that's assuming you don't think there should be a separate, you, the board, don't think there should be a separate.
You know what, I'm thinking we need two motions.
I think so too.
Two articles.
They might need a second article.
Can we just do that at the town meeting?
No.
Or does it have to be here? So we should do this now before we sign it?
I think you should have an added article because they're both separate, so you need to combine them.
So.
So should we do?
I'll make a motion, I know what to do.
Treasurer is Article seventeen, collector is eighteen, and everything shifts down? Is that what you're saying?
So, this is my proposed motion. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I move that we make Article seven.
Seventeen.
Uh, seventeen, excuse me, that Article seventeen be a, um, that we vote to have the elected treasurer. Position become an appointed town treasurer position. So that would be, well, I'm, I'm not, these are just motions right now, I have, I'm not looking for a second at this point. The next one would be Article eighteen, and it would be the same wording, but it would be the collector. Uh, be the elected tax collector become an appointed tax collector. That's what I'm thinking of.
And then shift everything after that, one number?
And move the other six in.
So, actually, can I, um, make a suggestion?
Sure.
If you added an article, so it would be Article seventeen, like in between sixteen and seventeen right now. So, you would have an act to see if the town would vote to combine the two positions. Cuz there's two questions here, will you combine the treasurer collector position into one position? Which it, it, it's held by the same person right now, because it makes no sense to have somebody different, but. Um, that's the first question, and the second question would be to make the treasurer collector position appointed. So you could keep Article seventeen as drafted here, but you just need, um, the first one to combine the two positions.
No, no, I think we need a third article, and then the reason I tell you that is because it used to be treasurer, clerk, collector. One person held all three, but they had to run in all three offices.
Right, exactly, and Mary is running twice.
So, correct. So, when the time came that the person who held the three jobs, one person, decided they didn't wanna be treasurer or collector anymore. They resigned individually from treasurer and collector and remained as clerk, and that's how it got separated. Now, the town didn't have to vote to separate them, simply because the person who runs, runs separately. So what I'm thinking of is, we have the motion to make the treasurer appointed, a motion to make the collector appointed. And then the third motion is to combine them, because the taxpayers, the voters, have a right to say, well, those are all separate, those are two separate positions. They might support treasurer and not support collector, and if you try to combine them first, I think we're taking a chance. I think the oddly thing is to do them separately and then put them together, cuz if we get no vote on one, we can't put them together.
I agree, and because that's the way they vote on it, they vote for treasurer and then they don't necessarily have to vote for Mrs. Hathaway to be the collector, but they do.
No, and sometimes, sometimes have three different people in three different positions.
Yep.
So, uh.
And I certainly don't wanna hire both a treasurer and a collector, that is definitely work, so.
Well, and then at the end of the day, you're the appointing authority, so you could just appoint the same person. Even if it wasn't combined, you, you could just say the same, that you're gonna serve as this and you're gonna serve as this too.
Well, if, well, we could, then we could eliminate the combination position, because we would've, we could've voted, obviously, one person.
That third item is actually.
Actually, no, we don't need.
Oh, no, wait a minute, there is a problem. Isn't there a, some kind of a rule that you can't collect two salaries?
Unless approved at town meeting.
Remember, Mr., no, Mr. Ferry ran into that with, what's that position?
Passed, passed, it was a passed control.
Right, but Mrs. Gorgard, the position was approved at town meeting, she holds two titles essentially. She's the assessor and the, she's the chairman of the board of assessors and she's the principal.
No, she holds elected and appointed, this would be two appointed positions, you can't hold.
But she's only paid for one, is what I'm, she's not paid for the appointed one. All the salary goes into the chairman of the board of assessors line in the, on the budget, uh, excuse me, on the warrant.
I, I think we gotta check this out, because I think there's a problem holding two appointed positions.
You can't be paid for two positions that are appointed, correct, that's true, we agree.
So that, so.
So if you have, we're, we're, we're getting to the same spot, you and I, we're just on two different paths.
So do we have to co- combine them with the, with that vote?
I think you should, and the D O R thinks you should. And the D O R thinks it should also be appointed, and honestly, if we do nothing, the state will still come down one day and make all the towns do it, so, that's fine.
So then, so then three votes in sequence would be the way to do it.
Sure, I agree with that, that you need to add extra, and I apologize, I was just, sometimes, you know, you read something a million times, you're like, yep, that's good, but.
I just thought this town was, we discussed it.
So seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen and everything, which is from twenty down.
Right, so appointed treasurer, appointed collector, and then to combine it, and Karen, and, excuse me, Mrs. Brady, and I'm so sorry.
Do you, yeah. Does that, um, does that make sense?
That makes perfect sense to me.
It makes sense, I, I wanted them combined, so I, I'm agreeing with it.
Yep.
Okay, so.
I think it should be combined.
You're, you're in agreement with the three mo- with the three articles?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so you want me to make the motion now?
Yep, if you don't mind.
Mr. Chairman. I move that Article seventeen be to.
Amended as described.
Abolish the elected position of treasurer and make it an appointed position?
I don't know if you say abolish, cuz you get two separate actions, so just.
I thought that we would continue with the language from seventeen and just cancel.
You need to add, you need to separate out treasurer and collector and make it collected.
Alright, so.
And we run this by council anyway and we have extra time, so we'll tell them what we wanna do.
Alright, so then the motion, if we look at what's written, the motion on seventeen would be, town vote to have its elected treasurer become an appointed treasurer, town treasurer.
Yep.
For the town of Dayton, so forth and so on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and it's gonna be voted on according to this article anyhow.
Mm-hmm.
At the town election.
Just wherever you see collector, strike it.
Yeah.
Copy it for eighteen and have it be.
Yeah, collectors.
Yep, and strike treasurer.
Right.
And then how do we word the third one, where we combine it?
Alright, Article nineteen would be to com- now, this is assuming the two separate ones.
Passed, yeah.
Become appointed, that we, uh, we have a motion, that we vote to combine into one position.
Mm-hmm.
Treasurer slash collector, appointed treasurer collector for the town of Dayton.
You don't have, the, the onus is not on you to like perfect the language, because we send it to council, we're gonna tell them.
Are we acting? Oh, okay, town council's gonna do it, okay.
But that's what we wanna do, right?
This is what we wanna do, so does this language.
Thank you.
Okay.
Achieves that, yeah, he'll.
So we're all in agreement, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen?
Yeah, and then move all the numbers forward.
Treasurer, collector, combine.
We also have the, well, you can just say yes, as amended, and, um, you're on recommendations right now, so again, you don't have, it's, the onus is not on you to carve out language.
No, 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 but we are gonna recommend it, right?
And we also have the benefit of other towns who have done this, we just copy from that.
Yes.
All three?
Yep.
Okay.
Towns who have done this, we just copy from that.
Alrighty, um, was there anything else, um, of concern? Or did anyone wanna make a statement on any of these?
Yeah, on the, on nine, nineteen and twenty, which are the pilot agreements.
Yep.
I wanna strike the last part and further to allow the Board of Selectmen to negotiate any changes in size of the parcel of land or size of the system.
Yeah.
So long as the payments reflected in the tax agreement increase or decrease commensurately or take any action relative thereto.
Mm-hmm.
In each pilot agreement, there are terms and conditions that talk about increasing or decreasing the number of panels.
Mm-hmm.
And the reason that I don't want this to specifically change is because we currently have a circumstance. Uh, that was mentioned but has not happened, where an existing solar farm said, oh, we're going to add such and such over there. And the building commissioner's, and they're gonna add it to the existing solar farm, and the building commissioner said, no, that's separate. You will need a separate license, uh, permit, and you will need a separate stormwater management plan. So what I'm saying is if you strike and further on both of those.
Give me one sec, can you, what, where are we striking, I'm sorry, I just wanna make my order.
Alright, go to the end of Article nineteen.
Yep, I see of land or size of the system, so long.
Keep going.
Or take any action relative thereto?
Alright, any action relative or take any action relative thereto is fine.
Yep.
Alright, but if you back up, where it says.
Increase or decrease commensurately?
Um, where it says alternating A C said tax agreement on file in the town clerk's office or take any action relative thereto. Strike and further allow the Board of Selectmen to negotiate.
Ah, okay, okay, gotcha, yep.
And, and my only concern is that a future Board of Selectmen, if approached.
Mm-hmm.
Might negotiate something that ends up getting the town in a real mess.
Okay, I, I get what you're saying.
And, uh, the fact that the building commissioner had, had brought this to our storm audit committee attention, because obviously, we'd be involved with an expansion. So, this would be more protectorate.
So what, so we're starting with and further, where are we ending the deletion? Right before or take any action?
Where it says, said tax agreement on file in the town clerk's office.
Yep. Comma.
Or take any action relative thereto.
Got you, okay, got you, everything between those two commas, understood, on both?
Yes.
Madam Administrator, do you have any, uh, opinion on that?
Striking that language?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, I think it's good, because I feel like if we, I've never, uh, supported a solar pilot, cuz there was just that one before and we remember that history. Um, however, I do feel, um, hopefully pending the review from town council is positive. Um, I do hope to support this at the town meeting, um, and if I were to support this and sign it and then we ratify it at the town meeting by vote of the residents. I wouldn't, would hope that someone wouldn't come along and change it.
Well.
How can that even happen?
Well.
Does it have to go back to town meeting?
No, all I'm saying to you is, in the agreements, the three that I've seen.
Sure.
Um, the two that are side by side and the one that's up on Elm Street.
Mm-hmm.
Any changes in the number of panels, in other words, each pilot agreement states there are X number of panels there, and they produce X megawatts. If there is going to be a change in the number of panels, let's say there's a horrendous storm and the whole bunch get wiped out, and they're not gonna replace them. There's language to protect the town.
Oh, okay.
By the same token, if someone who owns one says, we own that piece of land over there, we're gonna spread out and put some over there. No, you aren't, because this isn't allowed under this agreement, because we're saying to you, you go to that other piece of land, it's a new agreement.
So under that scenario you just gave, and then I apologize, we can, we can move on, but now, now I'm curious, cuz you raised another question. So in that scenario where the storm wipes out some of the panels, they decide, they decide not to replace them, they still owe us the same payment, right? Whether they replace them or not.
There is, there is an obligation in those.
Agreements.
Proposed agreements that cover that.
Okay.
Okay, by the same token, if they're only decommissioned for a shot time, you know, we lost ten rolls of panels from a hailstorm, but we're gonna replace them. Okay, just keep making payments, nothing's gonna change. Any reduction in, in, uh, or, let me put it this way, any attempted reduction in those pilot agreements is not gonna be automatic. They've gotta come back to the towns.
Mm-hmm.
And so what I wanna make sure is any expansion onto a, a budding or other property is a brand new farm, and it's gonna go through the process.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Thank you, Selectman Gulart, appreciate it.
Yep.
Um, and last but not least, and then I, I will call a vote on this, um, we all support Article eight. I know we had a, there was a long, uh, history, we all have said publicly that we want to, regardless of whether it's a library or what it, the fate of the building is, what apartment will be there. Um, that we support the Carnegie Building as a, as a.
I do.
Infrastructure, so.
We've, we've gotta get, we've gotta get as much of it up and running as we can, and I think this is the first step.
Absolutely. Okay.
Cuz without, without, without this money, we can't open the library, without being able to do these changes, library doesn't open up, which puts the town in jeopardy too, so.
Right, and this money is not wasted because it continues to make the building useful into the future, if we ever get a brand new library.
Regarding any, um, just before I call a vote and, and then, um, we sign or not the, uh, special town meeting warrant. Any changes or suggestions that we've made this evening, I assume will be run by town council?
It has to go back because he's art, he's reviewed this and so you wanna make sure that he can change.
Okay, that was my question, it's already been reviewed and now, okay.
So we're gonna tell him and then we're gonna expressly state what we're doing with. So we're gonna tell him, and then we're gonna expressly state what we're doing with the treasurer collector thing, just to make sure we get that right.
Okay. Okay.
We don't want to hold that up by going back, having to go back to town meeting.
Yes, yep, we want to get that right, because then it has to go, well, we don't want to get it held up, because then it has to go to a ballot, and, um, before I call a vote on this, um, was there any public input regarding the warrant articles?
There is, um, Mrs. Dushkowsky has a question on this.
Sure, absolutely.
Sorry.
On Article eight, I just was wondering, um, it said, a secondary reason for us to renovate a court portion of the public library, uh, would that include the mountain facilities?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it does, yep.
Yep, that is a priority.
It's a big part of it.
Did you have any other questions?
That's it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did anybody else on Zoom have any questions? Feel free to unmute yourself, please state your name and your address if you haven't already provided public input this evening. Okay, hearing none, um.
Uh, Mister Chairman, just one other comment on nineteen, well, what are now nineteen and twenty, which the numbers will change.
Sure. Absolutely.
The other thing that stuck in my mind repeatedly was Judge Maguire's decision and his interpretation of the role of the selectmen in pilot agreements.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that with striking these, I think we're more in compliance with what he said, what our role actually is, and again, I'm not worried about us, I'm thinking down the road in the future.
Any further discussion? Alright, I will entertain motions regarding the warrant, Selectman Pacheco, which one are we taking out? I would thought we, are we, we're not.
We, we can take it.
We're holding on thirteen.
Yes.
And we're holding on eighteen, I believe.
Eighteen.
Everything else?
We made some changes on others, but.
On nineteen and twenty. And obviously, we're creating two new articles and changing seventeen, yes, Madam Administrator?
Right.
You also just state, if this is your intent, that you will be voting on this tomorrow, so the public, if you're going to do that, tomorrow being the finance committee meeting, you are posted for it, we're within the forty-eight hour window.
Sure.
Um, and we would have no way of knowing that you're going to do that, so just to state publicly that like, this discussion will continue on your meeting tomorrow.
Will continue, I'm not sure that we will have a decision on the playground one, because that's more dependent upon the eighty-eight commission. Eighteen, I think, sounds like we're gonna have a discussion about tomorrow.
Isn't your meeting at four thirty or something?
Yeah, we're meeting at four.
You think you'll be ready tomorrow for the?
We're meeting at four.
I didn't want to press you that.
Yeah, no, I, I think we'll be okay, and this is.
Look, I'm over here like, you're meeting, you can decide, yeah, I'm sorry.
Finest committee is, uh, no, sixty, I think we've allotted a half an hour to discuss this, so hopefully.
Okay.
We'll get through it.
Yep.
And have, uh, a recommendation.
Well, and if not, then you just, we'll have to hold the playground one longer.
I think we should be able to resolve it.
Okay.
Tomorrow night.
Well, sounds good.
So do we need to vote on anything tonight, or can we take a final vote on the entire warrant tomorrow? What do you want to do?
Well, I think we need to, do we need to sign it?
You can do that, you can wait till the fourth, you have plenty of time.
If, if.
We, we have a lot of time for this meeting, which was nice.
Okay, so.
We can, if you want to hold off, and we'll, we can sign it and do everything on the fourth?
Oh, no, sign it, you gotta sign it tonight, you've already determined what's going on, your recommendations don't matter whether you sign it, so, you do have to sign it tonight.
Mrs. Brady, is that to leave? That's true. Okay, we'll separate the two issues. Okay.
So.
Let's put off our, let's hold off till at least tomorrow on our.
Recommendation.
Yeah.
So then a motion to.
Sign it?
Sign the warrant would be appropriate.
Yep.
That would give Mrs. Brady time to make the changes that we've talked about and agreed we should make, and by tomorrow night, we will have discussed with the FinCom recommendations, and we can take final votes on any question, article that's a question for us, okay, because we got a couple, we said, we need info or something. So is, is, would that work? We just.
It works for me.
Alright, so Mister Chairman, I would make.
But we do just need to wait, we're still gonna get feedback from town council, right?
Of course.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, but we do need to post the meeting, I know, Monday.
Right.
So, Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we vote to sign the warrant tonight as presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes.
Procedural question, as, as presented or as amended?
Yes.
We add more articles.
Tonight as amended, tonight would be as amended.
Alright, so. Alright, so Mister Chairman, uh, just a, um, uh, point of clarification on the previous motion, uh, friendly amendment, that the word, um, as presented, that those words be stricken, and it should say as amended, does that work for both of you?
Yep. Yes, we agreed to everything.
Okay.
Selectman Pacheco?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we're all set.
That wasn't, I don't think it was a motion.
No, it's just a friend.
I heard amendment, amendment.
A friendly, just a friendly amendment of two.
So what we already agreed to.
Yeah, yeah.
So if it was an unfriendly amendment, we're gonna have a vote.
Yes, then we have to have a vote.
I don't really know what an unfriendly amendment really, if you were really hostile toward the change, I guess, it would just say no, yeah.
It's when you just barge something at somebody.
I always think of Mister McKeon, I always think of Mister McKeon.
It's you. Running here twice, doesn't that go?
Somebody has a hand up.
Who wants to speak?
Oh, Mister Higgins has a hand up.
Who's the person that's leaning in the picture?
Me, I'm in the.
No, that's like a fake picture.
No, 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 no.
No, it's a picture.
It's not, it's like from a movie, it's not.
It's, it's a man.
It's not a real person.
It's Glenn Jefferson, it's Glenn Jefferson's video.
It's like a character from a movie.
Mister Higgins, do you have a comment? I see your hands raised on the Zoom screen. Here we go.
We can't hear you.
Wait a minute, we.
Oh.
We have feedback. I can't hear him.
No, I, I don't hear anything.
No, it's gone.
I hear a little bit.
He's disappeared.
He disappeared.
Okay, alright, so we, um, are okay with the warrant as amended, correct?
Right.
And we're gonna sign it, perfect.
Yes.
Um, and we will hold off on our recommendations till at least tomorrow, so more to come, I know public is anxiously awaiting those recommendations, and we will get them.
Yep.
Uh, certificate of donation, this, uh, so we need to vote to accept a donation of a temporary construction easement by Dayton Center, give me one second.
Yes, Mister Chairman.
Yep.
I move that we accept the donation of a temporary easement on Somerset Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
In the area behind Dayton Center, the value of which is nine hundred and sixty-five dollars, Mrs. Brady, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars, and that we send a, uh, letter thanking the donors for, uh, for that, thanking the owners for that donation for tax purposes, for their tax purposes.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
I've got half of this letter on my computer at home, I just didn't get finished, so I'll drop it at the office, so it can be signed, okay?
Thank you. Uh, next, we're going to e- accept the resignation of Chris Andrade from the D R Regionalization Study Committee, did we have a letter? Hold on one second.
Yes, it does.
I'm sorry.
It says, dear Mister Chairman, please accept my resignation from the D R Regionalization Study Committee effective immediately, thank you, Chris Andrade.
Okay, I will entertain motions.
I'll make a motion that we accept his resignation with thanks and appreciation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. Next, we need to set the date for the tax classification hearing, I know the, uh, not having the free cash certified has made that a little bit, uh, dicey. Do we have a recommendation on when we should set that date? Should it be for?
December second.
No, I was, I was looking at whoever had the answer, yeah, whomever.
December second, we verified, we gave Mrs. Beauregard two dates.
Sure.
She's lovely dealing with me.
She is.
Thank you, and, um, December second, so the week after Thanksgiving.
And that was amenable for?
Mrs. Beauregard.
Sure, are we going, um, I believe last year she had given us, and I really liked it compared to, um, some of the prior years, she, she, we had like a handout with like information, and
Packet, a, a, absolutely, yep.
There were explanations, and I, um, do we know if that is the plan?
I'm assuming she would do that, I can't think again, yes.
Okay, awesome, it's just very helpful, um, for me.
Absolutely.
Alright, uh, I will entertain motions regarding the December second date, oh, do we need to make a motion? Are we regularly scheduled on December second? I don't have that thing in front of me.
It's not a regular meeting.
But it'll be a very, it'll be a very fast meeting.
It's a special meeting?
Would just be, you would just hold that, if, so your, your meetings.
Okay. So I will entertain.
Wait a minute, no, I think it might be, because Chris, the way the holidays fall.
It is a maiden night.
Yeah.
Okay, so we moved our schedule around, okay, I don't have it in front of me, I apologize.
Neither do I, so what is our schedule for December then?
Second and sixteen.
Second and sixteen.
But I will take, I mean, since it's a, a hearing, I will entertain a motion.
I just want to comment that, I, I guess we, we canceled the December twenty-third meeting because it was Festivus.
I knew you were gonna say that, I knew you were gonna say that.
But we don't need to wait till that for me to start the grievance, the grievance.
We couldn't get the poll.
I'll make a motion that we set the date for the tax classification hearing for December second, at six, can we say a time, six P M.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I think Mrs. Beauregard will appreciate the six P M, uh, start time, uh, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion carries.
Mister Higgins' hand is still raised on this, I don't know if it's public input or if it's related to a specific.
Okay, we'll just get back to it when it's, when we go to public input, for sure.
Public input, okay, thank you.
We, I don't know if he knows, we have two, we have like one at the top, and we do one at the end, so, we never cut anyone off, everyone will get a chance. Okay, um, under selectmen's reports, do we have anything? I know we don't have anything on the agenda.
Oh, well.
There was a, a webinar that I participated in or listened to on hiring a ti- uh, town manager.
Manager, yeah.
And they've sent me some information, does the board want me just to forward that, you know, I attended it. But does the board want me, I can send that information to you too, just to take a look at it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's, was town it, uh, manager slash administrator, so we discussed that also, so.
Yep. It's similar.
Yes.
Okay, I'd love that.
Yeah, two town managers speak, as well as, uh, an attorney there.
Did you find it useful?
I, I found it useful, I did have a, a conversation with our town administrator as a result of that, but I did find it, uh, useful.
So who was the organization?
It was M M A.
Oh, it was M M A, oh, okay.
Yeah, it was, was it M S A, was it the solar?
Yeah, was that, I believe, well, they, one of the speakers addressed it as M S A, so I, I assumed it was M S A, but.
Okay, and just for everybody, um, we did, we, I don't know if we were logged in the whole time, but the TV went off, for anybody on Zoom, so you are back, we can see you again, and I apologize.
Zoom, it's Jimmy after, it was my computer, not the TV.
Yes, I would love that information, I think it's, um, timely, um, so I would love to, to be able to go through that, and I appreciate, um, you attending.
Yeah, sure.
Selectman Gula?
I will just say that we went to the library, uh, excuse me, the Lion's Chicken Barbecue Takeout, in my understanding, it was a smashing success, like a hundred and eighty tickets.
I saw the smoke when I was driving by, I, I stopped just for a second, because it almost looked like it was coming from, um,
A building.
primetime, and I had like a white knuckle moment, but then I put two and two together, and I realized it was the barbecue.
Because you couldn't stop, because you didn't have a ticket, right?
Yeah, well, that's.
But it was very efficient, too.
Yes.
You know, I, I saw the line was maybe eight cars in front of me, but it was zip, 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 and it was, they did a very good job.
Good.
I saw the line, I saw all the people and the kids, and there was, everything was going on with voting and soccer, and, so I parked up here and walked down, I thought, oh, I'm not gonna drive through that. But, but the traffic, you're right, the car was coming up the drive, they did a good job, yeah, it was nice to have a semblance of an orderly, normal event.
One-way, yep. Right, they've lost so much, the cowship festival and the arts festival, so it was good that they were able to, uh, get this done.
Yeah.
Ingenuity, they figured out a way to have an event, um, and they adapted, and, um, hats off to them, it smelled good, I will say that, when I smelt it on Somerset Avenue, I bet.
Yeah.
It tasted good, too.
If it tasted half as good as it smelled, you were in for a treat.
Yes, I, I didn't have to cook on Saturday, and by the way.
Nice, kick your feet up.
By the way, we did have Easter dinner on Sunday.
We did, okay.
Yes, it was, uh, the greeting was, happy Eastween, uh, happy Halloweester, or something like that.
I like Halloweester.
Do we have grievances on that holiday, too?
Well, the funny thing was, uh, our son brought Easter cots, and somebody else, I don't know if it was my niece or his friend, Suzie, uh, there was Valentine chocolate hots, and I said, what else are we celebrating? But we did get through it.
We've missed quite a bit this year.
Check the dates on the Valentine.
So. All you can tell you was dark chocolate, it was good.
Oh, ooh, okay, we'll talk, we'll talk offline, got any of those left?
Dark chocolate's very good for, uh, retention and the brain and everything, it really is, I, they get the, like broccoli is, artichokes, which I don't like, I love.
Really? Man, artichoke.
But anyway, we're probably going off subject.
No, it's okay, people love it.
A little bit.
Chocolate covered artichokes.
I love artichokes.
So we, we have a, um, letter from the Council for Good Energy regarding the energy aggregation cost increase, it is a lengthy document, did you want to summarize?
I do too.
Surprise, I'm surprised, yes.
Now I'm gonna have to summarize from now.
Well, I don't, I usually just ask a bunch of questions to get it from the phone call, so Mister Olbork, uh, he called us and let us know that due to some changes with the, um, Department of Energy Environmental, um, our aggregation costs went up. What this means really is a six dollar increase over a year, it is still a very minimal charge, it's a better deal than what national grids winter rates are gonna be, which is twelve, um, cents per kilowatt, this is still ten and a little bit, uh, trailing on the end, so, because of the charge, it's passed on to the consumer, of course, and so it is passed on collectively, but it is not major, and aggregation is still, uh, very much a good and solid project, so that's what this is saying, um, if anybody has any questions, we can certainly forward along this correspondence, it's part of the packet, it's online, um, but it is a, a long document, but what it says is, your energy aggregation rate is not the same as when we first voted on it, and it means it's a six dollar increase from what we normally would have had per year, so, that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much. Okay, do we have any acknowledgements? No acknowledgements. Uh, minutes, we have a vote to amend the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of September ninth, twenty twenty.
I shall move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion carries. We also have to consider approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of October seventh, twenty twenty, and October fourteenth, twenty twenty.
I, I just asked if we could hold on the seventh, I didn't get to read those today, because I was too impolite.
Are you okay with the fourth?
Yes, I did the fourteenth, yes, I got that one done.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, regular, uh, minutes, uh, the minutes for the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting of October fourteen, twenty twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion carries. And lastly, uh, we, uh, I will entertain motions to accept for review the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of October twenty-first, twenty twenty.
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion carries. Selectman Goulart, you have the floor for the approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. Eighteen A dash eleven, in the amount of a hundred fourteen thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars, fifty-seven cents. Eighteen B dash twenty-one, in the amount of twenty-three thousand, fifty-three dollars, fourteen cents, both payroll. Eighteen C dash twenty-one, in the amount of three thousand, one hundred eighty-two dollars, sixty-seven cents. And eighteen D dash twenty-one, in the amount of two hundred six thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollars, four cents, the last two being accounts payable, be approved. All are dated October twenty-eighth.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion carries. Um, this, uh, is public input, so if you are on Zoom, um, and you would like to provide public input, please unmute yourself, state your name and your address, if you haven't already provided public input this evening, and you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, Patrick, I just have a quick question, I don't know if you have a, uh, warrant for special town meeting for the sixth day, and they're starting to vouch for signing it on the second. It doesn't seem to be, I don't remember if they require for posting a special for maybe seven, eight days. Um, I don't, I don't, it's supposed to be a special for four teams, I don't remember.
It's fourteen.
Yeah. Yep. It's, it's fourteen, it's fourteen days, you're correct. Where, where, we voted to sign it this evening, um, what we're talking about are our recommendations, um, on each article, so that's what we're going to hold off till the fourth, pending some articles, um, being reviewed by Town Council.
Possibly tomorrow night.
I, I just wanted to make sure that.
And tomorrow night, too.
I just wanted to make sure the warrant, yeah, the warrant, and then you would be able to come through the, uh, what?
Yeah, no, no, Mrs. Brady was, I call her boss, Patrick, um, she was very firm with me in the office about needing to post that on Monday, so.
She put her foot down.
Just going to say, she guessed it.
She did.
She guessed it.
I don't believe that, uh, that is the end of an error.
It is.
Could you please clarify, uh, D R A, uh, D R R O R?
Error versus era.
Ah, no, it was an error.
That's a terrible thing to say, oh, my gosh, I just got it, okay, that's a terrible thing to say.
But it's also the start of a new era, and I do, I would be remiss if I didn't, um, for you, Madam Administrator, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge your, um, all your contributions, um, and I really appreciate it, you, like I said, you set us up on the right trajectory, um, and we will, uh, hopefully pick that ball up where you left it and carry it, um, going forward, so we do appreciate you. Thank you.
Leaving you some crap.
We have no plans. Thank you.
What did he say?
He just said, he just said he was going to.
Oh, leave.
Yep.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you for the.
Thank you, everyone, and with that, I will entertain, if there's no further public input, I want to give everyone a chance.
What is this?
I don't know.
He's clapping, he's just, he's excited.
Says, I don't know.
While hearing no further public.
I just want to say, I think our chairman spoke for all of us, that you will definitely be, uh, missed, and personally, I will, I will miss you, your guidance, your counsel. Uh, you've talked me off the cliff a couple times.
Yes.
Uh, but you've been, uh, been a great education for me, just working with you. I don't, I don't know what it is to be a board member and not have a town administrator. You, you too do, uh, so it's going to be a new experience, uh, for me, we're all going to chip in and help the chairman and the board with this, but we're going to miss you, and I will, uh, visit you in my former hometown, when COVID-nineteen is gone, and I, I can walk into that, uh,
Yeah.
town hall, wherever it's going to be, because it may be another place.
And make, uh, just, you know, some good trouble for you over there.
Good trouble, good trouble, we know where, we know where to find you.
Um, Ray, for your attending that's on your website.
Yep.
On your, on your website, it says elected officials on the left-hand side of the Agenda's minutes page of the Board of Selectmen.
Mm-hmm.
But when you pull that up, it has the elected officials from April of twenty seventeen, including Chairman John Keller of the Board of Selectmen, so many names.
We need to update our elected officials list, we can take care of that.
Oh, okay, but that's, okay, I think I know what you're talking about, Mr. Higgins, yeah, that's like a hidden link, um, I need to update that, so thank you, I will do that. We have the twenty, we have the twenty-twenty list that we can put up there.
If you had brought that to our attention next week, we would have blamed it on a former town administrator for not updating it, so.
Thank you.
Which I am not, Tony.
Oh, my goodness.
We're going to miss you, Mrs. Aaronstein, but I will tell you, we know where to find you.
Yes, we do, we do.
Neighbor to the south.
Don't change your number on me, I'm going to need advice.
Call me about stormwater anytime.
Well, we'll have some regional initiatives, because something's going on over there.
Yes, yes, that's true, that's true.
Hopefully, if we have a Cowship Festival next year, you would come, so your family, like to see your kids again, that would be nice.
So, I will share this, um, my oldest son, who is seven and has very much loved all the community events in Dayton, did ask if we'd still be able to go to Lights On, um, even though I was no longer working here, and I said, we will, we can't go on stage, but we'll be able to attend.
I had asked Mrs. Brady today, are we going to do something for Lights On?
We are.
They, they had a meeting, or they're, they're working on it, um, but I, it's going to look a little different.
Yeah.
And I think they were thinking of a drive-through something, but no, um, decisions have been made.
We're going to light the tree, I would assume.
The tree on that, on the other side, um, looks beautiful, so maybe they'll do something with, kind of changing the flow of it, but.
I think Mr. Kelly at the school district is also planning something, because he had called me about it, um, so I will forward any details that I have about that.
Yeah, because I was wondering about that, so, all outside, and you know.
It's going to be different, obviously.
It is, it is, but they did, they pulled the graduation off.
Yep.
So, I know they can pull something else off, but it will have to be, you know, outside, and you're going to have to dress really warm. So, if you want to endure the cold, then you are always welcome.
Very much been a fan of all the community events here, that's a lot of fun.
Well, we have been a fan of yours, um, if Cole would like to take my place during the Carolin, more than welcome to do so, not going to fight him on that.
He has weekly music class, and they sing, because he does it remotely, so they sing, and it's very cute, so he, he'll practice.